All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for your patience this evening. I'd like to go ahead and put all this Brooklyn Council meeting into order. Mary Jo, can you please call the roll?
Ron Van Kirk.
Here.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Here.
Andy Selhards.
Here.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Erin Borowski.
Here.
Kevin Tansky.
Here.
Sue Groden.
Here.
Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? The pledge of allegiance is used by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, I'll turn it over to Councilwoman Meg Ryan Shaki for our opening.
I'd just like to take a moment of silence for Domestic Abuse Prevention Awareness Month this month. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan Shaki. The first item on our agenda this evening is the approval of the minutes from our last council meeting dated October 11th. Are there any comments or questions?
Motion approved.
Second?
To approve the minutes, Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhards.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Erin Borowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Groden.
Yes.
At this time, we will have a public session. If anyone in the audience is here to say for the good and well of the city of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name and address, and you will be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or fewer.
Rob Slattery, 6600 Busser's Drive. On June 29th, I attended a safety finance meeting in this very building. And the meeting started with the mayor throwing the on-duty firefighters out of the meeting. At the meeting, we heard the mayor, the council president, fire chief, and another councilperson state the fire department is fully staffed. I expressed my belief that the fire department was in dire need to hire more firefighters, and the morale was extremely low, and the firefighters were working dangerous amounts of overtime. The mayor had stated at that meeting that the city had budgeted three spots for hiring across all city departments, but did not hire due to the rocky year and uncertain income tax issues. What has changed since that meeting? Has the income tax issue been resolved? Nothing has changed. In October, I submitted a public records request to the city for a position justification form submitted by any department director. I was provided the following document. This document was written by Fire Chief Paul. There are several questions on here. The first question is what deficiency or challenge addressed by the added positions? He stated, "Since 2011, we've had a steady decline of part-time fire medics. We have seen a decline of 80% of our part-time pool, which contributes to manpower per this collective bargaining agreement. With the present job market demands for these individuals on the rise and the supply for these individuals decreasing, with no end in sight, we see the part-timers leaving within six months to a year." The next question was, "What department goals is outlined in this strategic or master plan will be improved by these positions?" Since, this is part of what he stated, "Since the Great Recession between 2007 and 2009, the city of Brooklyn took a dramatic hit with significant drops in jobs compared to 2005. The master plan continues to attract manufacturing drops, create diverse retail services, and office jobs while at the same time looking to reuse and redevelop current buildings within the city. There's been a resurgence of the old American Greens property as well as the addition of an Amazon warehouse. Since 2005, the city has seen its first memory care unit and assisted living facility with the addition of Brooklyn Point. Soon to open will be the city's first convalescent healthcare facility called The Avenue. With the addition of these new businesses in the city, we will also need an increase of safety forces while trying to respond to emergencies within our residential areas." Another question, "What are the expectations, the improvements of the department goals?" His answer is, "It has been my goal to get the shift staffing increase to 24. In 2011, when we had 24 members, we had 1,560 medic calls and 647 fire calls for a total of 2,207 calls. Since the time, our manning has decreased to 21, a 12 and 1/2% decrease. In 2021, we've had 2,057 medic calls, a 32% increase, and 845 fire calls, a 31% increase for a total of 2,902, a 31.5% increase. The average age of the firefighter paramedics was 38 as our last budget workshop. It is my hope with the addition of three firefighters that we can lower the average age of the department. We are on pace for similar call volumes for both medic and fire calls." Next question, "Are there expected cost savings by adding these positions such as reduction in overtime or non-personnel expenses?" The chief stated, "I feel that the addition of the three fire medics, that you will see a reduction in overtime can be decreased approximately 57%." His last comment, "I have also seen an uptick in overtime being converted to comp time as opposed to being paid and converted into time off. For example, a member who works 24 hours overtime can be paid 36 hours and convert 36 hours to comp bank and use it for future time off, possibly creating additional overtime." On Friday, I was at the Brooklyn football game, and I had a short conversation with a resident, and I was informed that the city administration is directed to Civil Service Commission to conduct testing on our three firefighter medics. Now, I couldn't be happier with that. The problem is that we relied too in that safety meeting when we were told that the fire department is staffed fully. It's obvious the fire chief has to say whatever the mayor wants him to say, and that's just a major problem, just like with the fire chief. And I like both of these gentlemen. I think they do a good job, and I like them as people, but they have to tell the mayor what she wants to hear. We all know that. Look back in 2019 when the police chief made the video that said the city was safe as it was 25 years ago. We all know that's not true. They're in fear for their jobs, and that's a horrible position to be in. This city administration is ruling out of fear and is gambling with our safety. The mayor has no experience as a first responder. All the mayor is worried about is that Crystal Palace across the street leaving her mark on the city and jamming zoning changes down our throats. The mayor has bullied city council in his submission as well. Council is charged with two things, safety issues and budget. I remember a time at a past council meeting, a councilperson stated, and it's funny, you had mentioned it, "The biggest issue we'll ever deal with is the plastic bags from the stores. You guys need to get your heads out of the sand. You're failing at your jobs. The mayor has a dictatorship, and you guys have front row seats, and you let her do it." Let me give you an example of the power you've given the mayor. The Board of Control, for those who don't know, it's a committee made up of the mayor, the service director, and the safety director. The mayor holds two of those positions. John Verba, the service director, is another person who is forced to be a yes-man. I attended the Board of Control meeting on October 20th. The agenda's posted online, and they approved six contracts totaling over $24 million. The meeting lasted 1 minute and 45 seconds. How is that possible? Mayor, I ask you this for the fifth time. I've emailed you, I've come to several meetings. Why did you throw the firefighters out of that meeting? I will ask each councilperson to answer this question during your reports, and I hope you answer, because you guys have been ducking questions. Some of you answer, some don't. Do you support the hiring of the three firefighter medics? Don't ignore me like the mayor does. On a separate note, I'd like to say thank you to the Brooklyn Police Department for all their efforts in catching these car thieves who are endangering our community with their reckless driving. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Victor Arnito, 7439 Outlook Avenue. I want a couple of things that I'd like to talk about, the electric cars and their batteries, and the fires that they're having. They've made the big news in Florida with the cars going up, electric cars with the saltwater. They towed them into a yard, so they're now keeping the electric cars 50 feet apart. And it takes, what'd they say, about $2,000 gallons of water for a gas car to be put out? And they say about 9,000 gallons of water for an electric car, and they keep igniting after they're sitting there, sometimes hours, sometimes days. Is our fire department equipped for electric car fires that are keep growing? And our fine government wants to keep chasing us over to green energy with electric cars? And Tesla himself, Tesla, I don't know his name again, but he even came out and said, "The country's not ready for all electric cars. We do not have the infrastructure." And again, you see that in California, it's hot. Please shut your air conditioners down, turn them down, turn them up high, whatever, for the cold, for the temperature, and do not plug in your electric cars. So we're ready to change over. In somebody's world. Another thing, it's been brought up lately, but it's been going on for years, but it's on the news media now with the elections, China buying the U.S. They own, from I've heard over the years, they own a tremendous amount of businesses and property. Are we allowed, is our country allowed to go over and buy parts of their countries, different countries? And I guess China's quite sure they're not alone. And another fine thing that the government's cramming down our throats, and it's needed at times, are the bike lanes. But they're also waiving that, "If you don't do all those things, you're going to lose money in another fair way." Brought this up many times. Start charging bicyclists money to start paying for these things. It's not fair that our tax dollars go towards all the bikes, because there's a lot of people ride, but I guess I bet it's quite a minority compared to the average person. You know, we're not Europe. Maybe they're pushing us towards that. And another thing that's always on the news is climate change. I'm no wizard that in any way, shape, or form, but through the history, we've gone through glaciers. I think Ohio in itself was under, has an ocean eons ago. Different things have changed. When the planet got obliterated, wiped out all the dinosaurs and everything. And I had a magazine from back in the 50s, and they were talking about worried about when we're going to run out of oil. And there's articles out there that are saying that the planet is actually manufacturing oil. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Stuart Rager. I live in the Parkview Estates Apartments on Memphis. I need to qualify my comments by admitting that I'm the new kid in town. I grew up in Cleveland, but just moved back home recently. I've attended a couple meetings, a couple council meetings, and I wonder if, I wonder if things might go more smoothly if, and I imagine a charter amendment might be required, but if the mayor were required to appoint a safety director who was experienced in those realms, who was a public safety, a law enforcement professional, so that those departments could run more smoothly, be run by professionals, and also remove the mayor from direct responsibility for those areas, and allow her to manage the managers, to supervise the managers, rather than worry about direct program responsibility. Just food for thought. I wonder if things might go a little more smoothly. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. Bonnie Barcek, 4831 Ridge Road. I would like to come to you tonight and talk to you about, I wasn't born and raised here in Brooklyn. My husband and I chose to buy our home here, and I'll get to that in a minute, why we chose Brooklyn. But one of the things I want to tell you about is the town that I grew up in. I grew up in a very small, little town, but my little town that I grew up in didn't have its own school system. But the town right next door, which is just as small as we were, had its own school system. Both towns had excellent police services and firefighters and service departments. They were exceptional. But the one difference between our towns was that school system. And the difference between our towns and our property value was a house in my town, where I grew up in, Newburgh Heights, was valued at a third of what the houses were valued at at Cogah Heights. And truly, the only difference between us was the Cogah Heights school system. Newburgh Heights is a part of the Cleveland School District, so we don't have our own local school system. So, growing up, I've lived this my whole life. So with that in mind, I want to tell you all that I really hope that everyone in our community, because our community has been wonderful and always supported our schools, supports our schools with this levy. Voting yes. It is no new money, no new taxes. It will not change your monthly budget in any way, shape, or form, but what it will do, if it fails, it will impact us greatly. And it will have an impact on the people that matter most in our town, and that is our students and our children. And I know, and if you look at all the towns in northeast Ohio that are successful, they all have one thing in common. They all have a very strong school system. And the school system really is, I know it's kind of cliche to say, but it really is the heart of this community. Friday nights, when you can hear the band playing going down Burwell, and there's things that just scream Brooklyn, and it all starts right at that school when they become hurricanes. And so I just ask all of you, because when I went to buy a house, I bought a three-bedroom, one-bath house. Believe me, I'd love to have more than one bathroom, but I wanted to live in Brooklyn. And I wanted to live in Brooklyn for one reason, and it was the schools. And that's what brings people here. People will come here for our school system. And I ask all of you to please give your support for the school levy. It is crucial to the success of your city, the success of this entire town. I know everything you do up here is very important, but these schools are the heart of our community, and I would hope that each of you would publicly come out and support our levy. And I ask every community member to please vote for our levy a few weeks away. Please vote yes. It is no new taxes, no new money. We are not asking for any increase whatsoever. It's the same amount, but if it fails, it's going to impact our students greatly. So please consider supporting the schools, supporting the community, because, believe me, I know that it's going to have such a big impact. If our school's success is nothing, it doesn't, it just means great things for you, because that just makes our city stronger. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you to all those who spoke. We'll now move on to reports of committees, commissions, and boards. We'll begin this evening with our Recreation Board, Councilman Tansky.
Thank you. Safety Town Trick or Treat will be held on October 27th from 6:30 p.m. until 7:30 p.m. The next Recreation Board meeting will be held on November 21st in the Rec Center Meeting Room at 7:00 p.m. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up is our Domestic Abuse Commission, Councilman Ryan Shaki.
In recognition of Domestic Abuse Prevention Awareness Month, the DAC is collecting donations, including baby diapers, baby wipes, dish soap, Clorox cleaning wipes, laundry detergent, Kleenex, body soap and lotion and deodorant. There's a donation box available 24/7 between now and November 1st in the police station lobby, thanks to all those who donate. That ends my report.
Thank you. Next up is the Plinning Commission, Councilman Groden.
Thank you. We, our next meeting will be November 2nd, Wednesday at 6:00 p.m. And other than the zoning issues that will be on our agenda, the only request is a request from CESCO Imaging for a monument sign for Memorial Heights at 8251 Memphis Avenue. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up is our School Board Liaison, Councilwoman Pucci.
Thank you. I attended the last school board meeting, which was on Tuesday, October 18th. Under the superintendent's report, there was a very in-depth presentation and explanation of the new school report card. This was lengthy but very interesting. There's a brand-new report card system, and it is very different from the past report cards. So for anyone who's interested, please watch the meeting. The presentation is right in the very beginning. Information for Brooklyn City Schools on the Ohio Checkbook website is updated quarterly. They approved minutes and financial statements, approved bylaws and policy changes, approved overnight athletic trip for the girls varsity basketball team, and then they also adopted an overnight travel policy for teams and athletics who qualify for regional and/or state championships, and that would be just for the school year 2223. This way, they'll have a policy in place if it comes up, and this provides to pay for the expenses for the hotel, meals, and transportation. The board adopted resolutions relating to substitutes and coaching assignments, various resolutions relating to staffing, tax advances for 2023, worker rates for hosting Ohio High School athletic events. They're going to be conducting an electric audit of the system through the Ohio Schools Council. If there is any savings to be found, meaning that if they were overbilled for electricity, the savings will be split. They also, excuse me, approved an emergency repair for the fire alarm system. All of the information, including all the detail on these resolutions, is available on the school board's board doc site. The next meeting is Tuesday, November 15th at 6:00 p.m. in the Treasurer's Office, and then the next meeting after that is November 22nd, 6:00 p.m., Room 173. Please note that both of these meetings are changes from their normal dates that they meet. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. The Committee of the Whole met prior to our council meeting tonight at 6:15 to discuss the following. Under the old business from legislation carried over from last meeting is Resolution 2022-38. This is the agreement authorizing the cost sharing with the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District for the 2022 street sweeping project. This is up for third reading, and councils recommend that, the committee did recommend that council adopt. Next is authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with PCs for People Minnesota, and this is offering broadband expansion program. It's a partnership between this not-for-profit company called PCs for People Minnesota and the county, and they're requesting the use of two of our buildings to locate rooftop antennas to help with that broadband. Under new business for this evening, the first item is Resolution 2022-39. This is on first reading, but we hope to pass by suspension of the rules. This is an adjustment for the guaranteed maximum pricing for the city center project. There are four items that we have added to this project, all at the request of the city. The first is two items of edging that will take place around the Rec Center, also around the city center in regards to how the landscaping is handled at the new project across the street. The third item is some sidewalk replacement on Brookway. We were already doing, the sidewalks have been being replaced. As our service department's had some time to do it, since things are already tore up over there, we thought it'd be a good idea, or the administration thinks it's a good idea to go ahead and replace the sidewalks on Brookway. Also over on Brookway, there's a parcel of land that the city owns that is currently being occupied by the Panzico Trailer, and there's a lot of flooding issues on that parcel of property. So while they're doing other grading work over there, we've added, if this passes, that will add that area to that list, and we'll also do some landscaping to make sure that lot is the way that it's supposed to be once that trailer leaves. And the community unanimously recommends that council adopt. Next was ordinance 2022-28. This updates the capital improvement plan for 2022. There were five changes on that. Three of them deal with the police department, and that is for patrol vehicles, tasers, and a truck and trailer, $165,000, $50,000, $100,000 respectively. The police has, the police department has been unable to procure any of these items due to difficulties in the supply chain, so those are being removed from the capital plan for 2022 in hopes that we will be able to procure, I'm having a hard time saying that word, procure them in 2023. Another, the other two changes were for the street program. One was an addition of $30,000, and this is for Brooklyn's portion of Brook Park Road that needs to be paid to Brooklyn Heights this year for that program. That's for $30,000. Of course, we know Brook Park Road is going to go under some major construction next year. And the last item was some work that was to be done at the Memphis Tideman Interchange, and that was for $450,000. Due to an increase in the cost of that project, we have removed it from this year. It will be placed for a new bid for either later this year or next year, and that will hopefully take place in 2023. Council did, the committee did recommend that council adopt. Ordinance 2022-29 is on first reading. This is the capital improvement plan for 2023. This includes all the capital items that we, that council through the administration would want to purchase for next year. This includes our street program, all of the capital needs for all of our departments, and it totals $8,071,88. And the entire list of this is on board docs. I'm not going to read through it, it's quite lengthy, if anyone in the public would like to go through and read it. Another item, ordinance 2022-30, is amending Section 505.21 titled Hunting, Poisoning, and Trapping Prohibited of the Codified Orders of the City of Brooklyn to amend the penalty provision. This was an ordinance introduced by Mrs. Pucci. It would increase the fine for hunting in our city from a misdemeanor III to a first misdemeanor, and it would increase the penalty from, I think it was $400, I believe, for that fine. It would increase it up to $1,000 and/or six months in prison as a maximum penalty for hunting in the city. Ordinance 2022-31, hope to pass by suspension of the rules. This is the annual dental coverage from Delta Dental for 2023. There is no rate increase for 2023. This is approximately a cost of $95,000 annually for the city, and the committee did recommend that council adopt by emergency. Ordinance 2022-32, Enacting Chapter 765 Apartment Complex Security of the Codified Orders of the City of Brooklyn. This is a piece of legislation introduced by Mr. Selhards. This in regards to enhancing safety procedures at our apartment complexes, an apartment being individual units of four or more, and this item was referred to the Public Safety Committee for further discussion. Ordinance 2022-33, this is amending 95902 of the Codified Orders of the City of Brooklyn to amend eligibility for our snow removal services. We have talked about this item at a couple of our different meetings, and this legislation would in part would add to the not less than 65 years of age, an additional way for people to receive their service, and that would be any individual with a disability. That significantly limits the residents' ability to do basic work-related activities. It would also exclude driveways that had any type of grass strip down the center or gravel. And also, there would be an income requirement for only individuals who fall below 250% of the household poverty guidelines that's set forth by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. And that's on first reading. Ordinance 2022-34 through ordinances 2022-42, all of these amendments deal with the new zoning code, and we will make a recommendation that council send these over to the Plinning Commission when we get to our legislation, our agenda. Again, all of this information, it's a lot of information, is available on board docs. I would highly recommend that individuals go onto board docs and read this. This has to do with the updated zoning code that we've been working on for over a year now. And so all that information is out there and available for you to read. Lastly is ordinance 2022-43. This is on first reading, but hope to pass by suspension of the rules. This would add a temporary position to our part-time and full-time administrative employees. As the mayor mentioned at a previous meeting, our service director has left his position here in Brooklyn to take a position in another city, and so we do not have a building commissioner right now? Oh, so, no, Mr. Verba's still here. Right, I apologize. It's our building commissioner, all right? He is departed for another city. My fault there. And so this would add a temporary part-time position to that. Our, I'll say it again, our building commissioner has agreed to stay on part-time, so the city has someone. That is just a step gap, and the mayor has, the administration has already posted this job. It's been out for two and a half weeks. Thus far, we've received one applicant. All right, that concluded our agenda for the Committee of the Whole. This meeting does take place at 6:15, and as you can hear, we cover a lot in those meetings, so would recommend the public attend, that it take place at 6:15 prior to the start of all council meetings. That concludes our reports. We'll now, for our committees, commissioners, and boards, will now move on with reports of council. We start this evening with Mrs. Ryan Shaki.
Thank you. This past weekend, we finished up our weekend community cleanups for the 2022 season. We had 12 volunteers show up on Saturday at the Home Depot to clean up along Brook Park Road and the area in general, and we also received donation of goods from Home Depot as well at this cleanup. Thanks to all of our volunteers who came out this year, the cleanups would not be successful without you. We did have a total of 75 volunteers pick up 88 bags of trash over 10 cleanups between May and October this year. Additionally, we saw 18 new faces, thanks to everyone who came to one or multiple cleanups during our fourth season. As mentioned in the Domestic Abuse Commission report, October is Domestic Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. Domestic abuse is not always physical. The United States Department of Justice lists several categories of domestic violence, including physical, sexual, economic, psychological, technological, and emotional abuse. And in addition to these types of domestic violence identified by the Department of Justice, the U.N. also includes stalking as a category. If you know someone who needs help, please have them contact the domestic, National Domestic Violence Hotline at 1-800-799-7233, or they can text START to 88788. That ends my report.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Selhards.
Good evening. My sincere condolences to the family and friends of Pamela Stan...
My sincere condolences to the family and friends of Pamela Stanton on her passing. Tomorrow's the last fresh fruit and produce giveaway at St. Elias starts at 3:30 PM. Please do not arrive too early. Some people show up at 1:30. So if you like sitting in a parking lot for two hours, go ahead, but it won't start till 3:30 or maybe a little bit before that. Senior residents, if you need help with raking leaves at your home this year, please contact the Brooklyn Senior Center. We will be running a program the same as last year where members from the Brooklyn High School athletic teams will come out to your home and rake your leaves out to the curb. We will notify the service department about pickup. The difference this year is that instead of coming out in one day, as we did last year, the students will be out after school the first full two weeks of November. So if you need help, please contact the senior center by October 31st. On a lighter note, judges will be driving around this Thursday evening for the annual Halloween decorating contest. If you got it, haunt it with spectacular decorating ideas, Brooklyn. And with the school levy, mentioned it before, I'll mention it again, it's a renewal. So if your situation, financial situation is that you can afford it, and financial situations do change for people year to year, if you can afford it, please vote yes to support it. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Pucci.
Thank you. I'd like to offer my deepest condolences to the family of resident Nancy Cofrin, who passed away late Thursday. I first met Nancy when she was one of the first volunteers for the Brooklyn Animal Shelter, the wonderful group of residents who raised the necessary matching funds to turn the old house into the shelter, and of course, funds to care for the animals, both physically and financially. Nancy was a tireless volunteer, always willing to help with whatever needed to be done. She was a wonderful friend to many. She never met a person who wasn't her friend. If you met Nancy, you were her friend. Founding Shelter President Cheryl Palumbo said that she never could have done it without Nancy's help, not only with the business of starting and running a shelter, including continuing to raise money, but also before we had an animal control officer, when residents called trying to get cats out of trees and herding loose dogs into a fenced area. Please keep her family and close friends in your thoughts and prayers. And my condolences also to the Stanton family. I was not aware that she had passed away. A reminder to vote either early by mail or in person or on Election Day. There are important races and issues, and please support issue four, the renewal for the Brooklyn City schools. And we had our budget meeting, our first budget meeting for 2023 last Monday. It lasted just over three hours. We had some good discussions, and thank you to Mr. Ragus for all the preparation and documentation. We always appreciate your thoroughness. One of the items we did discuss at length was the hiring of three firefighters. There's never a vote taken in a work session. However, through the discussion, it appears that there is enough support to hire the additional firefighters. I stated my support for this months ago. I recognize that this will not solve all of the issues that we have, but I do believe that it's going to help. Regarding ordinance 2022-30, which is on the hunting, this started because in the area where I live, down on Bidoff on the north side, closer to the Tiedemann end, there's been some people back in the woods shooting guns, assuming that they're hunting deer. And in my discussions with the chief and him and the police department trying to address this, he mentioned that he thought it would be a good idea if we took our hunting ordinance and increased the penalty from a third-degree misdemeanor to a first degree. Now, discharging of a firearm is a totally separate charge. So this would be the hunting, which would also include bow and arrow and BB guns. Regarding the zoning code, please take the time to review this, and if you have any questions or concerns, you can reach out to any one of us, the mayor or Mr. Rowan. For quite a few of the public open houses that we had, we had a small group of interested residents that came to most of them, but we, they were not well-attended. So, you know, this, this is where we are now, at the last step, considering the legislation that will be the change in the zoning code, and then also the companion pieces of legislation, which will be what will actually go on the ballot for all of you to vote on next May. I hope everyone is able to enjoy this beautiful weather we're having, and that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pucci. Next up, Mr. Varowski.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to say thank you to the owners of one of the newest businesses in town, Ms. Dur and Mrs. Ortiz from the Ortiz Art Drafts and Designs. They had personally invited a few of us, and I was able to attend it a week later, but they gave me a really good rundown and walkthrough of their workshop. Some of the equipment is beyond anything I can explain or comprehend, a very detailed artwork where they can even create laminates for school buses. They etch things with lasers, glass cutters, fabrics, woods. They can create glass statues, pretty much whatever you want, so that they're going to get it done. They're located at 4, excuse me, they're located at 4338 Ridge Road. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tansky.
Thank you. Good evening. The biggest social security increase is coming in 2023, aimed at helping an estimated 70 million recipients contend with the high inflation that has been plaguing the U.S. in the last year. Through this increase of 8.7% in monthly payments is the largest increase in four decades. It comes with drawbacks for some seniors. These higher benefits may erode Social Security's reserve funds if there is a recession. Many seniors depend heavily on Social Security, 42% of elderly women, 30% elderly men, who rely on the monthly payments for at least half of their income, according to Social Security Administration. Despite the annual increases, benefits have not kept up with the rising cost of living for years. Inflation has caused Social Security payments to lose 40% of their buying power since 2000, according to a study released earlier this year by the Senior Citizens League. Monthly payments would have to increase $540 to maintain the same level of buying powers in 2000. Higher-than-expected COLA could have long-term implications for Social Security solvency, and it could potentially move the solvency date currently around 2034 forward, says Mary Johnson, Social Security Policy Analyst for Senior Citizens League. A recession would put additional strain on program solvency by reducing the payroll tax revenues received by the trust funds. The league saw a spike in the number of emails from seniors who said they were struggling to afford food, housing, and other necessities starting in the summer 2021. Some said they were down to one meal a day of being evicted from their homes. Another downfall facing seniors is that increased income could result in bigger tax bills, pushing some retirees over the income thresholds, which are not indexed for inflation, requiring them to pay income taxes on part of their Social Security benefits. 50%, up to 85% of their benefits could be taxable if an individual's income is $25,000 for single filers and $35,000 for joint filers. Many retirees are facing this predicament this year after 2022 Cost of Living Adjustment, or COLA, increase of 5.9%, according to the Senior Citizens League 2022 Retirement Survey. About 59% survey participants believe that there could be at risk of higher tax liability this year due. Rising Social Security income due to COLAs can also impact Medicare Part B, D premiums down the road, depending on your income. A survey from the Senior Citizens League found that 39% of participants who received low-income benefits reported their low-income assistance was reduced to this year's Cost of Living Adjustment, while 15% reported that lost access to at least one assistance program. This COLA increase can lead to trims, income-related benefits such as food stamps, rental assistance for low-income beneficiaries. While this increase to Social Security recipients sounds like a great idea, it also means the total benefits cost for Social Security trust fund down the road will sharply, be sharply higher than anticipated. Currently, the main Social Security trust is expected to pay out full benefits to 2034, according to the annual report released this year. Increase in Social Security income provided by the 2003 COLAs will permanently raise expected lifetime Social Security benefits needed for current and for future recipients, since the COLA is applied to the benefit amount of those who have claimed yet, meaning the reserves could run out sooner. About 90% of funding for Social Security benefits comes from payroll taxes through FICA, taxes on wages. And any layoffs and more unemployed workers will also be a problem. With salaries in the U.S. to project a jump from 4.1% to 4.3% in 2023, according to the Conference Board, and with higher inflation, more funding come from payroll taxes and workers paying the program will contribute more to payroll taxes to counteract benefits for Social Security recipients. The underlying problem that has existed for so long with COLA since the mid-'70s is that it does not reflect actual cost of living changes as they apply for seniors, said Max Richmond, CEO of the National Committee to Preserve Social Security and Medicare. This increase is still insignificant since the cost of food, home heating oil, and other necessities have gone up. The combined trust funds that pay benefits to retirees, survivors, and the disabled will be depleted by 2035 and only able to distribute roughly three-quarters of promised payments unless Congress addresses the program's long-term funding shortfall, according to the most recent Social Security Trustee's report. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tansky. Mrs. Grodick.
Thank you. I have taken Mrs. Pucci's advice and have been outside quite a bit. Just this afternoon, I walked the new path, walking path at Memorial Park. It isn't quite finished yet, but it is still extensive, and I wish I could show you the pictures that I took on my phone. It just looks beautiful. I parked behind the Historical Society and was able to right, walk right on the path. So that is a great change for us. And you all have a one more beautiful day, and then some not-so-beautiful days, but still, a lot of time left to go enjoy our new walking paths. The only other issue I want to talk about is Issue Four. I would like to reiterate, November 8th is Election Day, but in Ohio, we have other options to vote. My favorite is to vote early by going downtown, and that is a little intimidating to people if you've never done it, because parking downtown can be intimidating, but the Board of Elections has free parking right behind their building. And their address, I wrote it down, is 2925 Euclid Avenue, easily accessible by getting off at Chester Avenue and driving around the corner. Park in the back, have your proper ID, walk in, you'll get our Brooklyn ballot. If you only want to vote for the school levy, you could just go straight to Issue Four. But it is an easy, great way to vote early, and starting Saturday, there are extended hours. So there's hours this Saturday until 5:00, Monday through Friday. Next week, it is until 7:00 PM. And then the last weekend before Election Day on November 8th, it is open voting hours are Saturday and Sunday. So plenty of time to go downtown and vote. It is really easy to do. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Just one additional thing to mention, it's been mentioned a couple of times, it was mentioned in one of the public comments as well as on committee, and that is the new zoning update that's been going on. Of course, we've been talking a lot about this. This started all the way back in the summer of last year, and our zoning code has not been updated in 30 years. And so we have started this process, and we're well into it now. And as Mrs. Pucci mentioned, and I mentioned as well, I would encourage you to go on board docs, and all the information is right there. But there's also a website that's been created, it's been up for a while now, it's BrooklynOHZoning.com. And you can go on there and read all about it. It gives you project status as to where we've been, where we are currently, where we're going in the future. Also, several of the meetings were videotaped, and they, I guess not videotaped, I don't do tapes anymore, but were recorded and are now available on there for you to watch. And so there is lots and lots of information out there, and this is a very slow, arduous process, but it is a process that's needed. The zoning and the planning from 30 years ago does not fit with, reflect the community of today. And so we want obviously to protect what we value most, but also to move Brooklyn into the future. So again, there were several public meetings that were held for people to issue comments, several did, most didn't. But you're still able to go on here and to read all about it. And of course, with any questions, please feel free to reach out to Jeremy, Mr. Rowan. He has kind of spearheaded this on the administrative side, he's done a great job with that. And so it's a very public process, and so I would encourage everyone to go on that website again, it's BrooklynOHZoning.com. And that's all I have, so I'll pass it on to the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. I'd first like to start off by thanking our finance director, Tom Ragus, and the rest of the directors for their preparation for the budget meetings. I know we've only been through capital and part of operating, and we'll go to the general fund in the next meeting, but Tom puts a lot of effort into the presentation to make sure that the information is clear to council, that we're prepared for the next five, 10 years from now. And so I just want to thank you, Tom, for all the work that you do, and the rest of the administration, because they are required to be part of a lot of meetings in order to get to the point where Tom is able to give the presentation that he does do. Budget work sessions are such a good information gathering period for Brooklyn. It really kind of answers a lot of questions that have been asked, and I think that if people went, they'd understand finances a little bit better. I think that what you see in those budget planning work sessions is that the administration is looking forward to plan accordingly, and especially with personnel costs. Because with personnel's costs, those are those continuing rising costs, as healthcare rises, that rises with every personnel, as salaries increase, that's a repetitive increase that continues to go up for us. So we have to forecast those increases. For example, healthcare, we forecast a 10% increase every year, because that's really what the going rate is. I know Mr. Van Kirk would think that we should increase more, but when it scales out, we do really well with our healthcare benefits, and we knock on wood hoping it stays that way. So again, planning out for the future, so we can eliminate that possible burden on taxpayers in the future by going to them and saying, we didn't do a good job of looking at our budget, what we bring in, and what we can actually pay for year over year. And what happens if you don't plan, you could kind of rewind back to the 2008, 2009 period of time, you have to increase taxes. So that five-year forecasting, that 10-year forecasting, looking at what's going on in the market right now, whether that's inflation, inflation's not only impacting residents, it's impacting us as well. Our office supplies are up, the costs, our daily costs, we're seeing it year over year. I know someone mentioned, we can't even get vehicles for our police department. It is actually better for Ford to sell to personal vehicle holders than police departments. This is not a Brooklyn thing. This is mayors talking about Ford breaking contracts with all of us, because they make more money selling to you than selling to us. So we have to look at these, these plans and knowing that we can't just go, okay, well, we weren't able to buy our vehicles this year, but our vehicles will continue to get old, and they continue to get used, so we still have to hold that money and be prepared to buy vehicles when we're able to secure them. So looking at those things continually, looking at our withholdings. Brooklyn unfortunately has a large commercial base, unfortunately, but fortunately, because that takes less burden off of you typically. But in the time of COVID, when people are working from home, Brooklyn has seen an 8.7% decrease, because withholdings have gone down, because we have businesses that have a large gap of people working from home, like Key Bank or Medical Mutual. So we've seen that. Unfortunately, other, other cities are trending up versus us, but that's just reality, and we have to deal with it. As I said to city council on the budget work sessions, I wish that we could have a crystal ball. I wish that we could know, and then we can say, we can guarantee what, what this is going to look like next year, but we can't. I think that we'd all be millionaires if we could, with playing the market. So one other aspect that we really need to take a look at is our infrastructure. When I came into office, we had a municipal need study done, and that was with our municipal buildings. And as you recall, this particular building hit that threshold, that point where it made more sense to build new than continue more sense to build new than continue to add on. That was just basic maintenance, deferred maintenance of this building. And so we've gotten there, but we still have a lot more to go. I talked about in our Committee of a Whole meeting, our fire station, which is our newest building, is having issues right now. That is going to cost the city a good amount of money, because during the build, something is silly, that to me, a cavity wall wasn't put into the building, and it's causing structural issues. So that's something that we have to deal with. Our recreation center was our largest expenditure as far as infrastructure, and you'll be getting a survey pretty soon. But that's stuff that we would like to continue to plan for, and that was a conversation in our budget session. We realize that that's still looming, and we have to do something in order to engage residents to continue to use that facility to make sense for us to continue to have it. So again, why those budget work sessions are just so vitally important. And again, thank you, Tom. I think you point out all the big things that we need to continue to keep our eye on, so we plan ahead for this community, and it makes sense. On a smaller thing, See Click Fix was something that my assistant put in the last newsletter. It is an app that launched, but it's also available on web-based through our website. So if you have any issues, it could be a daily issue, or it could be something you see when you're walking in the park that the city may need to fix, or even trash on the streets that we just might have missed. This is a great opportunity for you to take a picture. You don't have to take a picture, you could just insert the information where it was, and our staff, whoever is appropriate, will get notified immediately, and then you could track our progress. You can see, we run the message, we'll respond, and we'll click when we said that we fixed the issue. So you could track. So some people have used it if the service department missed their trash by accident, and they could just insert that information, and they're right back out there as soon as they can to go pick up that trash. So whatever you see, we can't always see everything that's going on in the city. We try to, but being our eyes and our ears are really helpful. So that See Click Fix app would really be beneficial for us as the team here to input that information. So she'll continue to put that out for people to see that information and promote it, because it is a new app. So we did have the Aging in Place Grant this past year, it was very successful. We got a lot of nice letters of seniors who were able to upgrade their homes to make it safer for themselves to continue to live there. But we did have about $6,000 left over. We did reach out to the county on that supplemental grant and ask if we could buy items in order to support seniors, and they agreed. So we will be purchasing items to help seniors, whether those are lift bars, the handles, different things like that, and we will have it in our senior center. Again, my assistant will put something in the newsletter, we'll do a social media post, and Kathy Missary, who is in charge of the senior center, will help organize that handing out of items to Brooklyn residents who may need them, the seniors. I also would like to wish my condolences to Bill Sant, he is an employee in our service department. He lost his wife Pam over the last week, and she was only 49 years old, and I just, my heart goes out to him. It is just way too young, and I feel bad for Bill, and I really wish that his family has peace during this time, and we can all be there for him. And I also wish, I pass my condolences on to Barb Stepek. She lost her husband, Dave Stepek, and I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I know this probably got brought up, but Dave and Barb have just been so instrumental in our community. They've helped run the Historical Society for years. They've done so much for our community, and he is just a big loss, so I just want to make sure that I recognize that. We don't have a council meeting for the next few weeks, I just want to remind people of a few things. We do have, I have a coffee with the mayor on November 4th at the Senior Center at 9:00 a.m. Halloween, as always, is October 31st from 6:00 to 8:00. We always have questions about that, but we do keep that Halloween, 6:00 to 8:00 every year. And then in honor of the veterans, we will have some coffee and donuts on November 10th at 9:00 a.m. at the Senior Center. You do not have to register. Kathy is just having a little get-together to just say thank you for everything you've done. And Stuart, I want to answer your question about the Safety Director. When I initially took office back in 2016, was on the verge of American greetings, leaving, and I made the decision in order to cut costs, which is not that much in the big scheme of a budget, but $16,000 is what a Safety Director makes. I assumed that role. I still don't take the salary for that position. It is not a charter decision, it's an ordinance decision passed in 2000. Ordinance 131-01 allows the mayor to be the Safety Director. I was in college at that point, I don't know why the city made that decision to allow the mayor to serve in that role. Ironically, you bring it up, because I did have a conversation with both chiefs earlier this year about that decision to fill that role, and I can let Chief Milkie state his opinion publicly if you want, so you could talk to him afterwards. He mentioned that his preference was for me to continue with that role. He's been through both avenues, with it being filled by another person and filled by me, and he said that it's worked out in a better way under this. So if you want to say anything to cover what I'm saying, then you can, otherwise you can talk to him directly. But if council wants to fill it, I'm not quite sure what $16,000 part-time position is really going to get, so I think that that would have to be reconsidered on what actually is necessary. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two director's reports this evening, unless Chief Milkie wants to jump in for the third, but the first one is our Finance Director, Mr. Regus.
Good evening. Just two updates for me tonight. The first update is requiring the September financial report through September 30th. Overall, on the general fund side, revenues, overall revenues are 80.1% of the estimated amount, also 14% less than prior year due to a decrease in income tax revenue of $2.6 million. Much of that increase is due to a net decrease of one-time or non-recurring revenue received from net profits that we received last year that we did not receive this year of $1.34 million. A net decrease of one-time non-recurring revenue from withholding tax base that we received last year that we did not receive this year of $338,000, and a large employer withholding loss of $1.1 million to date. It's consistent with what I've been reporting throughout the year. On the bottom half of the income statement, on the commitment side, commitments are 77% of the budgeted amount. Overall commitments are 7% or than September of 2021. About $400,000 of that is due to an additional third payroll in September that we did not receive last September, but that'll equalize itself out in October, because there's three payrolls in October 2021 where there's only two this month, so that'll equalize itself out. We received our income tax distribution from Rita for October. Overall distributions are $1.66 million, $216,000 more than October 2021. Included in this are payments that are classified as one-time or non-recurring revenue. Excluding this one-time or non-recurring revenue, we received $55,000 more than October last year as a result of an increase in withholdings of $65,000. So overall withholdings were higher this October as compared to last October, which equates for the difference in the two months from this October to last October. And also, as we've talked about a little bit, the budget work session, we have another one coming up on November 7th, 6:00 p.m. at the Senior Center. We'll be discussing the 2023 general fund budget and also the long-term financial forecasts of the general fund going forward, as the mayor pointed out. We have a third placeholder on the 21st. My goal is not to have that meeting, we have not had the third budget meeting since I've been here, so that will be my goal. And I'm confident we'll be able to get through the materials that we need to within the time limit. That concludes my report tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Regus. Just to piggyback off of what he said, I know a budget work session probably doesn't sound like the most exciting thing for residents to attend, but Mr. Regus has a very good way of, I like to put it on the bottom shelf, where everyone, even if you're not necessarily of financial mind, can understand exactly what's going on. If you want to know the financial status of our city going forward, I would highly, highly recommend that you attend one of those budget work sessions. They're very, very informative, and Mr. Regus and his team does an excellent job putting it together and not just saying that, because he's here. I've told him that in private a million times, but I would encourage you to come, and it really will explain a lot about what's going on in our city if you come to that. We are planning for 2023, and so I would, and plus, and then the five-year forecast and that as well. And so, you don't have to stay for all three hours. We had one resident that came last meeting, stayed for, I don't know, half an hour, 45 minutes or so, and then he sneaked out the back, and we all had to stay for the rest of it. So you're welcome to come, it takes place over at the Senior Center, and again, that'll be Monday, November 7th at 6:00 p.m.
Maybe we can, I have a question.
Yes.
I'm sure you saw the court case that it was decided that Cleveland had to refund the municipal income tax now for 2020, and I think we're anticipating kind of a ripple effect. Do we have any sort of information on that?
No, Rita's gathering that data. They have not given us that information, but I have reached out to them and will continue to say.
Okay, okay. And I would just echo what Mr. Van Kirk said, but I would also suggest next year we'll be in our new facilities, and I think it would be good to record the budget meetings so that residents who can't come, for whatever reason, would still be able to view the process. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Butler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight, among other citizen comments, you heard one that questioned the work of the Board of Control. I thought it might be an appropriate opportunity for the person whose job is to defend the city and its integrity to respond to that comment in particular and instruct you, because you're not at the Board of Control frequently or at all, on what it does. It's, first of all, a creation of statute. Our charter, which is our chief governing document in this city, obligates us to follow state law when it comes to spending money, procurement. And that includes, for example, having City Council approve expenditures greater than $50,000, having City Council approve, or excuse me, competitively bidding contracts that are subject to competitive bidding if they're over $50,000, and using a Board of Control, that's a state term, to approve contracts that are $5,000 or over. The revised code, which is not a code that we control, it's written by the General Assembly in Columbus, obligates municipalities to form boards of control, particularly those municipalities that, like Brooklyn, have to follow state law when it comes to procurement. The Board of Control must consist of three public officials under state law, the Director of Service, the Mayor, and the Director of Public Safety. As it happens, as you heard from the mayor, the mayor serves in both those roles in Brooklyn, and frequently that is the case statewide. And so two individuals in our government have to serve in those three spots on our local Board of Control, which must approve contracts in amounts greater than $5,000. I can tell you that the work of the Board of Control, as it is elsewhere in Ohio, is perfunctory. The Board of Control often is considering contracts that have already been considered by City Council, most certainly have been considered by me as the Law Director, and almost invariably have been brought to the administration's attention by the directors responsible for executing those contracts, chiefs, Director of Finance, Director of Law, Building Commissioner, Director of Service, and Mayor. And I only, and Director of Economic Development. I use those as examples only, but all those contracts that get to the Board of Control have already been seen many times, multiple times, by administrative officials who happen to meet regularly, who discuss these things, and who oftentimes discuss them with you as council members in open session. So I don't want you to get the impression based on tonight's comments that the Board of Control is somehow some sort of secret, underhanded group that meets here in Brooklyn to approve massive contracts that the public doesn't know about. That's just not true. The Board of Control meets because it's obligated to meet under the revised code. It's obligated to consist of the people it consists of, and it's obligated to consider contracts that are put before it, most of which have already been vetted by City Council and all the directors. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Chief.
I'll just make it short and sweet. How much, I've worked under both systems. For the clearer lines of communication, I prefer to work directly for the mayor. I've made that clear to her. Under the old system, under a Safety Director, too often things got misconstrued to the part. I can speak favorably to the system we got now. We have public safety meetings, which you members of council have called, I've attended, we hash things out. I could tell you the mayor and I don't agree on everything. If it was up to me, we'd have a lot more police officers, but it's also incumbent, it's all our duties, to be fiscally responsible to the city, and that's something we talk about in those Public Safety Committee meetings, and something her and I talk about almost on a daily basis. So clear lines of communication, more layers you add, the less clear it gets, in my opinion.
Thank you, appreciate that. Mr. Butler, may I ask you one question in regards to that?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
What would happen if we did not have a Board of Control?
We'd be clearly violating state law. We would not be appropriately approving contracts that the mayor, as the sole official under our charter who's obligated to sign contracts, would be signing. She wouldn't have the authority to sign the contracts that the city is obligated to sign.
Very good, thank you. All right, we'll now move on with our legislation for this evening. Under old business, carry forth from our last meeting is Resolution 2022-38, authorizing a community cost-sharing agreement with the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District for the 2022 street sweeping project. Additional comments or questions?
Move to adapt?
Second.
To adapt. Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Aaron Barowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Ordinance 2022-27 is on second reading, authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with PCs for People Minnesota LLC in furtherance of Kaihoga County's PCs for People broadband expansion program. The next two items are on first reading, but hope to pass by suspension of the rules, the first of which is Resolution 2022-39, amending Resolution 2022-36, approving of a construction budget and authorizing an extent execution of a guaranteed minimum pricing amendment for the city center project and declaring emergency. And these are, have to do with the four items, two with the landscaping, one with the sidewalks, and one with the grading over where the construction trailer sits at the present time.
Intervened by all to suspend the rules?
Second.
To suspend the rules. Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Aaron Barowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
To adapt. Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Aaron Barowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Ordinance 2022-28, authorizing the updated capital improvement plan for 2022. This deals with, there were five changes made, three of which deal with police vehicles, tasers, and a truck, as well as an increase of $30,000 for street improvement, and also a $450,000 reduction for the Memphis Tiedemann Road interchange.
Move by all to suspend the rules?
Second.
To suspend the rules. Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Aaron Barowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
To adapt. Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Aaron Barowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
The next several items are on first reading. Ordinance 2022-29, authorizing the capital improvement plan for 2023. Ordinance 2022-30, amending Section 505.21 titled Hunting, Poisoning, and Trapping Prohibited of the Codified Ordances of the City of Brooklyn to amend the penalty provision. Ordinance 2022-31 is on first reading, but hope to pass by suspension of the rules, accepting the dental coverage from Delta Dental for eligible employees from January 1, 2023 to December 31, 2023.
Intervened by all to suspend the rules?
Second.
To suspend the rules. Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Aaron Barowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
To adapt. Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki?
Yes.
Andy Selhertz?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Aaron Barowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodek?
Yes.
On first reading is Ordinance 2022-32, enacting Chapter 765 Apartment Complex Security of the Codified Ordances of the City of Brooklyn. As I mentioned, this is on first reading. It has been referred to the Public Safety Committee. Ordinance 2022-23 is on first reading, amending Section 959.02 of the Codified Orders of the City of Brooklyn to amend eligibility requirements for snow removal services provided by the city. I'm going to read these next nine ordinances. They are all on first reading. And then I'm going to make a motion that we refer to them to the Planning Commission as a whole. Ordinance 2022-34, adopting new Part 11 Planning and Zoning Code of the Codified Orders of the City of Brooklyn and the new official zoning map of the city. Ordinance 2022-35, providing for the submission to the electors of the City of Brooklyn, Section 1102.09 of the Codified Orders of the City of Brooklyn, creating new public facilities PF and parks and open spaces PO, zoning districts.